Okay, thank you for this. So take us through how this post happened.
Okay, well, we, a couple of weeks before I had made the post, I had talked to a father who called me. He was concerned. He had been to his daughter's basketball game. They had a few basketball games in a row and playing different teams. And a couple of the other teams looked to him to have a boy on the team. And concerned about whether his daughter was safe on the court, he approached the refs and asked a couple of questions. And then they, he was pointed during a break in the game. And then he was pointed to the athletic director, who pointed him to the principals. He simply asked, you know, if this was a boy on the other team. Again, out of concern. And immediately, he was shut down. And he was told he can't ask that question because it's discriminatory and called a bigot. And told, "How dare you? That's a biological girl." So he was concerned because he just had a question. He didn't know. And that speaks back to, you know, policies that are happening and how parents don't really know what's going on. Because they know, they may or may not know that there are circumstances that boys can play in girls' sports based on laws that have passed. But they don't know the details. And so they look and they wonder. And they don't know how to resolve the issue. And so he came to me and asked. And I honestly didn't know how to, what to tell him because I know it's a sensitive issue. And it's something that nobody really dares talk about. So, you know, a couple of weeks later, I was sent the picture that I ended up posting, the two pictures by different fathers, both concerned and not knowing what to think. I honestly didn't know if the girl that has, the attention has been drawn to was a boy or a girl. I, so I made a post that was just objectively neutral. I said two words, "Girls' basketball." No quotes around "girls." I know that's something that's being said. Just an apostrophe after "girls," "Girls' basketball." And I put it up to see what... The intent was never about the girl. It was always about the policy issues and the confusion that parents are facing and the uncertainty. And they're not knowing how to have their questions answered. They don't know how to ask. And nobody seems to know how to have this conversation. Because if you say anything, you are immediately attacked or, you know, demonized. And so, but it's a problem that's affecting many people. So I was, you know, hoping that we would have an opportunity to have more of a policy discussion around this. And so when I got on and I noticed after, you know, I was busy all that next morning. I posted the night before and I got on. And I realized the direction it had taken, where the comments that were being made were directed in a negative way towards this girl. I immediately was shocked. I thought it was, I called it a firestorm in my apology. Because to me, it was a firestorm. But that, looking at it now, it was nothing compared to what it's blown up into be. And so for the negative direction that it took that was completely unintended, I am deeply sorry for any hard feelings or negative outcomes from that post. And if I had to do it over again, I would never have made the post if I thought it could go that direction.
So you wanted to have a policy discussion, though?
That's where my mind is. Because that's what I deal with on the board. And so that was my frame of mind.
But can you see people who say, "Well, that's not the way to have a policy discussion." That's taking a young girl and drawing her into these policy discussions, which are the purview of the school board, not a 15 or 16-year-old kid?
Yes, and that's why I quickly apologized and I took it down. And I immediately tried to contact, find a way to contact the parents. I had a couple of friends reach out that know both families. They told me how wonderful the family is. They confirmed that it was a girl. Again, I didn't know one way or the other. That's why I didn't say one way or the other. That was not my intent. My intent was the policy discussion. And for that, for drawing attention to her in a negative way, that was, I own that. That was poor judgment. And that's why I wouldn't do it again.
When you say you own it, you mean what?
That I should not have posted it.
So parents, you talked to parents of this girl, right?
I tried. I reached out. After finding out who they were, I immediately reached out. I sent a message to the father who had messaged me. And he was, you know, upset. But he seemed open to talking about it. And I responded and I let him know, you know, "I completely understand where you're coming from." Basically, if I'd been in his shoes, I would have been upset too. Obviously. Because, but I hadn't been looking at it from that angle. And so I immediately, you know, I was really grateful to see that he was so protective of his daughter and would go to her defense. And I actually told him that I wish that there were more fathers like him that would stand up for their daughters and look out for all of their children.
And this was a phone conversation with him?
No. I asked him if we could meet or have a phone conversation.
It was texts?
It was texting. And he never responded. It was through social media. So I could see that he had seen it. But he never responded, which I felt terrible about. I think we could have avoided the huge media blow up and the added spectacle or negative attention that it drew towards the girl. If we could have just had that conversation, he could have known where my heart was and where I was coming from.
So it was reported that the parents felt that you had apologized at one point, but your apology was insincere or less than sincere. You never had the opportunity. Is that what you're saying?
I never had the opportunity. I reached out. I tried. I asked if we could meet, if we could talk. And I just, I feel bad that that never came about. I did make an apology, a public apology on my Facebook post. And I don't know if that's the one they were talking about. It was a much more personal apology that I sent to them. And I made a more general apology for the public. I just thought that was more appropriate, given the platform. And, you know, that apology has been taken as insincere or non-apology when it was absolutely from the bottom of my heart. And, you know, people want to deconstruct it and read things into it that were not my, you know... The way my apology's been framed is is other people's interpretation and not what was in my heart. I was, I am deeply sorry for the harm. I am a mother. I'm a grandmother. I have children. I know. I know that that's not a good thing. And I don't want to hurt any child. I've done nothing but try to protect children the whole time. That's been the whole focus of my time in office, is trying to find out how to protect children.
So the reaction to this post surprised you?
Oh, very much.
What reaction were you expecting?
I was just, I just wanted to maybe have a conversation about the fact that nobody can ask a question even around me this.
That's what the dad told you? The father who initially was wondering about the makeup of the teeth?
Right. But you can see in our culture that if anybody brings it up, you know, they're immediately shut down in the general public. You just, it's like the subject is off limits and we can't have this discussion. Not in a real, genuine way as far as how this is really affecting people. Because, so, yeah. We just need to be able to have the conversation.
Based on the reaction, do you think the girl is a victim? You're a victim? Or both of you are victims?
I would say the girl is absolutely an innocent victim in this. And for that, again, I feel terrible. I have really good people that comment on my posts that are usually very civil. And so it caught me completely by surprise. I didn't, I know that those kind of conversations are had in other areas of social media. But I've tried to be very careful to have the tone of the conversations on my posts very civil. And so, and the people that I'm friends with that can, that comment are usually very good. And so, yes, it caught me completely by surprise.
And you've already said, if you had to do it again, you wouldn't do it.
Right.
There have been people who said, "Look, you know, the job of a school board member is to defend and protect kids." This seems well out of that realm. Do you agree?
When I see it from other people's perspective, outside of what my perspective was when I posted it, I can see what they're talking about. And that's why I would, if I had to do it over again, I would not post it or do it that way. I would try to find another way. I'm still trying to figure out, you know, the best way to address the policy issue side of this. So that we, hoping we can have that conversation.
Let's turn now to this election interference question, if we may. In your letter to Rob Axon, the chair of the Republican Party and others connected to the party, you raised questions about election interference. What do you see as the most egregious examples of that?
Well, when you have a sitting governor and the lieutenant governor come out and make a denunciation against a candidate or an elected official that's running. And they actively frame you in a very negative light and condemn you in the public realm. And they attach the state seal to it. And then they actively promote, endorse, and contribute to the opponent's or the individual's opponent. That, to me, is unconscionable. That, to me, is absolutely election interference, where they are favoring one candidate over the other, especially the lieutenant governor, who is over elections that should absolutely remain neutral. And they're propping up my opponent. And then you've got the issue with the party who's been calling. And the recording was played the other night on the news, one of those conversations where the whole tenor of the conversation was around convincing me that there was no way forward, that my options were all dried up pretty much. And basically trying to get me to resign without coming right out and saying...
That's how you interpreted that phone call?
Absolutely.
That was a, "You better resign or else."
Hundred percent, yes. The party, I mean, they came right out and said, "You will have no support whatsoever from the party."
What the party's saying about that, though? They're saying, "Well, we don't have money to support a lot of candidates." And so you're, you know, we're, this is what the party's saying. I'm not, I'm just repeating what I've been told. This is, we don't have money to support a lot of candidates. And so, you know, telling you that, "Hey, you know, you're probably not going to get money from the party," is not unlike a host of other people who are running for office. What do you make of that explanation?
Well, you said money. They said any resources, any support whatsoever. And if a candidate wins at convention, the candidates are told that they have the support of the party, that they become the party's nominee, meaning the party will support them. So that conversation told me that even if I, you know, by some miracle, won at convention, that they would not support me. Because they, and they pulled in that comment about the governor. Because they said, "The governor is not inclined to retain my seat."
But he had made public statements to that effect. I mean, he had already condemned the post. He had already said, you know, that there should be action taken against you for it.
Again...
Those statements were in the public record by that point, correct?
Well, and that's why I asked. I tried to clarify with him. And I said, "What does the governor have to do with this?" And he said, "Influence." Which tells me that the party is taking things that the governor says and adjusting how they support or don't support a candidate.
So you think the party's got it out for you?
I think they are being unduly influenced.
By the governor?
By the governor, the media, others that have come out openly against me. So I think it's feeling like it's turned political instead of, well, obviously, it's political. It's a campaign season, so...
The majority leader said, in response to your assertions about election interference, he said, "You know, had you not posted what you posted, there would be no backlash." And so that was on you. Is he wrong?
If they had some kind of legal analysis done on that, I would, I take responsibility for my post, okay? What it has turned into, though, is far more than what it should have been. Again, it seems to be politically motivated to continue to blow it up over and over and over again, constantly for the last week on the news. We've seen other actions by other leaders that have been given very different treatment or no treatment at all that are far more egregious, in my opinion.
What's the reason? Why are you a target when those other people, in your view, are not?
That's a good question.
We get one in every once in a while.
Yeah, yeah. I think perhaps it's because I am outspoken and I speak very openly about the problems that I see in my effort to be transparent to my constituents. Because that was what I ran on. I said that I was going in to deal with certain problems that I saw in the system. And one of those is about the things that are being taught and being brought in, the undue influence in our schools from national and global agendas. But I think our policies are all wrapped up in those national and global agendas. And so for me to come in and be outspoken about those and shine a light on them is disruptive to the system. And so those that have given all of their time and energies to building that system and making it more and more resilient to, so that the things that they're weaving into the system can't be undone, are not appreciative of someone that comes in and shines a light on those problems. Because it's hard to undo those once they're entrenched.
Some say that, you know, it's not just this one time that you've had out of a track record since being in office of drawing attention, facing criticism for some of the things that you have said. This is part of a pattern. Is it part of a pattern? And are you trying to be harmful when you make these controversial statements?
No. I'm not trying to be controversial. I'm trying to be transparent. I'm trying to bring light to issues that I have researched in depth and that are affecting the education of our children. There's, I have been consistent. I wouldn't call that, I mean, they say a pattern of behavior as if it's a negative thing. I have been consistent in bringing light to what is happening at the board level, at the state board level, what's happening in the schools. And again, I think it is not appreciated by those within the system that want it to continue to move in this more progressive direction, which I see as a very regressive direction and harmful to our freedoms and our liberties and to the innocence of our children.
You used the term unconscionable a moment ago in discussing the backlash, the reaction to this. And including, I think, the negative, the post that you said you were not expecting. The governor, though, has said, "Well, your actions have been unconscionable. And the legislature has now censured you for the post." Are they wrong?
Well, I think of this, I think the double standard is unconscionable.
Double standard compared to whom?
So you've got individuals like the governor, back when the incident with the BYU volleyball team, where they said somebody was yelling racist things at one of the visiting players. And he called that, they determined it was one individual in the stands, a BYU fan, that happened to be an autistic boy. And the governor posted that this boy was a racist a-hole. Was there a backlash against that? Where he was actually targeting not just a child, this wasn't a child, it was an adult, but a childlike individual that was autistic and accusing, you know, going after him for something he actually didn't ever say. Where was this huge blow up on something like that? But because of his position, I suppose, there was no backlash. And he was able to take it down and not apologize. And nothing more was said. There's another instance with Senator Nate Bluen, who back, I think it was in June of last year during pipe month, you know, he posted a picture of a 13-year-old boy in drag, twerking. And said, "This kid's got moves." So an actual child that is being harmed or exploited for the sexual pleasure of an adult male audience that was watching, that's not harmful? I've, again, I have, the double standard is hugely problematic, that they can hold one elected official to one standard and one to a completely different standard. That's not okay.
And that's what you think is going on here with you?
I think because I am shining light on things that they are trying to get into place to create these, the system of a 21st century system for education, they're not happy with me. And I know I've spoken out against many bills that I see pushing us in those harmful directions, based on my research that I do nonstop to try and uncover what these programs and policies and initiatives are that are coming into our school. And I don't think that they appreciate when I speak out against a bill that in the past may have just flown through because I don't think people are researching what these policies are that are being put in place.
Why do you want to stay on the school board? I mean, given all of this, what's your motivation to stay?
The same thing, same reason I ran in the first place. I have no other desire than to protect the children of our state and to protect their freedoms and liberties and their innocence. That's all I've ever cared about. And I feel deeply, that is my purpose and my passion, is to help protect kids. That's why it's ironic that this has all happened when I've done nothing but work as hard as I can every day in office to help parents and to protect children by exposing the things that are, I see, as harmful to children.
Considering resigning?
No.
You won't resign?
No. There's too much work to be done. And I, and as long as my constituents want me there, I will be there and I will continue to be a voice for them.
What about your race for reelection? You going to keep up your race for reelection?
Yes. If my constituents want me there, I will. I think that is the proper process. That's our democratic process, is that the ultimate accountability comes at the election. And I, so, you know, as far as other measures that have been taken against me that our Senate and House leadership call unprecedented in taking their actions against me yesterday or the board taking against me, that is, I am in here for the people. And to bring light and understanding and that transparency that so many in the legislature say that they want, they want the schools to be more transparent. I'm actually bringing the transparency and it's appreciated by many, many in the state. I've heard from countless parents who have thanked me for bringing to light what is actually happening, the deeper workings of the system that they never understood or knew before. And they are deeply grateful for the light that I have brought to these issues.
And the people who say, "This is not the way to do it, what you did. That post is not the way to do it." You say...
I say, "You can't step into this arena without making mistakes." And there's not a single person that has gotten into office that has done everything perfectly. But I have done my, I have done my very best. And it's not always appreciated, again, by people with, in that policy realm. Maybe they don't like my style. But I have worked tirelessly to bring things to light and help educate the people that I represent and to try to be their voice where they are not otherwise heard.
You think you'll win?
I hope, I mean, if the people want me there, I am happy to continue serving.
Some people out there might say, "Crazy." You know, I'm not speaking for myself. I'm saying, somebody might say, "That's crazy that she's not resigning. Crazy that she's not leaving the campaign. Crazy that she thinks she might win." That is what I think some people watching this might say. And to you, to them, you say what?
I say, "Make your decision at the ballot box." And I am fine with whatever way the voter decides. I think that is what government for the people and of the people is all about. And that's the way it needs to happen. Otherwise, if we continue to move in the path that we have been going, which is unprecedented, this kind of cancel culture of elected officials, imagine the chilling effect that it's going to have on elected officials being able to have hard conversations. Policy, policymaking is all about hard conversations and being able to have these really tough debates about these issues. And if they feel for a minute that their unpopular opinion might get them canceled forever by their fellow legislators or their fellow board members, are we ever going to be able to really have strong policy debates again? Or are people in those positions going to start self-censoring? For fear that they might say the wrong thing and be censured by their peers in those positions? That's not what America is about. That's not what it was ever meant to be. And this has a really bad precedent moving forward.
If you were to be reelected, what would change with you in a second term?
I will continue to do the work that I've been doing. And while also trying not to step on the myriad of landmines that have been created in this cultural revolution that we seem to be going through right now.
Do you have a recording, any other recordings with individuals, decision makers, office holders that you have taken in the last few weeks? For instance, the House leadership meeting that you had at the Capitol? Did you record that? And if you did, would you release it?
Well, when I go into meetings like that, I assume that somebody's recording, even if it's a private meeting. And so I often will record in those kind of situations just so that I have my own record. It's just for my own.
And that's what you did?
Just for my own, because so many times, you know, what I say is taken out of context or twisted or words are put in my mouth that I didn't say. And so I just keep that for my own record so I can go back and review it and make sure I remember it accurately. So I'm not misrepresenting.
So you do have a record of that, then?
I do.
You do, okay. The recording that you released to us, why did you decide to release that? I mean, what was your motivation then? If the recordings are... If the recordings are for your record, why was it important for that one to be public?
Well, when you, there are claims that were made in that conversation that others on the State Central Committee could not corroborate. So it was a question of, is he being honest and is this election interference? Because you've got the state board, you've got the governor and the lieutenant governor, you've got the legislature, and you've got the party, all pressuring me to essentially resign. And to me, that's highly problematic. They need to let the process play out and let the voters, the delegates and the voters decide.
Natalie Klein, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you for coming and visiting.
Appreciate getting your perspective.
Thank you.